Hey, Chairman, you have the floor.
All righty. Counselor Capone.
Yeah.
Counselor Delasola.
Yeah.
Counselor Florio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero. Counselor Mangan.
Here.
Counselor Matusky. Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Palatano.
Here.
Counselor Simonelli.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon. We have ten members, uh, ten, nine members present, Mr. President. I can't think very well.
Thank you all. Anybody dialing?
No, it's a committee.
You gotta make that out of the thing, like you.
At the regular meetings, yeah.
Does everybody have the same things that I have here?
Yeah, Julius did. Yeah, Julius came to him. Well, that's a...
Mr. Clerk, do you just, do you have the agenda or no? Just read your, I guess, what's on the agenda.
I'll read it very slowly in case somebody comes. The agenda is a resolution sponsored by Counselor Hanlon as President because the committee had to be called. It resolves that Ms. Julius Arfrian, a representative from National Grid, are hereby respectfully invited to appear at this meeting regarding work being done on West Street and planned for other areas. In particular, scheduling of projects, length of projects, planned disruption of service if any, traffic exclusions and/or rerouting, hours and days of operation, plans for dealing with snow emergencies, removal, and neighborhood notification.
This National Grid, yeah, oh, yep, that's him. Mangan. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to invite, invite a guest up here to speak. Okay, the folks, yeah, folks from National Grid, please step forward. Julius, you can come up too. Okay, Counselor Mangan. Well, just, um, I know everyone probably has the same questions, but I just, uh, if you could just explain, I know work has to be done, but I'm just curious as to why, why now with the bad weather coming and everything else up on those particular streets? That's all. That's my question. Okay, uh, hold on for a second. I get Counselor Delasola first.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
If you folks would please identify yourself, name and address.
Sure, Dan Cameron with National Grid with offices at 170 Medford Street in Malton. So Counselor, to answer your question.
Next person, please.
I'm sorry.
Andrew Joseph, National Grid, also at 170 Medford Street in Malton.
And Julius?
Julius Arfrian, City Engineer.
Okay, and Mr. Cameron.
Okay, so, um, what's, what's happening with, with National Grid on the, on the, on the gas side? And this is really, I guess, across the whole entire state, is that, um, we are on a Capitol campaign to get rid of all the old cast iron gas pipe that's in the ground. And it's a federal mandate passed down to the state, passed down to us. And it's really a fifteen to twenty year plan. And of course, you know, being in New England, you know, sometimes, you know, we're limited as to how, what time of year we can work. So we're asking communities, especially communities such as Everett that have a lot of old cast iron pipe. Everett, Malton, Medford, all these cities have a lot of old cast iron pipe. In order to meet the goals and try to get that pipe out of the ground, especially the leak prone pipe, and replace it with more modern plastic, is that we're trying to work year round. We're working with the City Engineering Department and the DPW. We've had meetings. We've got procedures in place in, for inclement weather. You know, we're not leaving plates on the ground at night. And if we do, because of its emergency, we'll obviously get them back off if, if snow was in the forecast and so forth. So we've had pretty good success with a lot of communities allowing us to work. I mean, not everywhere, we're limited. Um, I think there's, Andrew can speak, but I think there's about five streets we're looking to attack, you know, during, during the winter, during this winter. So that's where National Grid is, you know, to answer your question. We're, we're trying to, now, if we have a winter like two years ago, I mean, obviously we shut down. But as long as the weather cooperates, we can certainly work through the cold. But if we do get as much snow and inclement weather as we did a couple of years ago, it probably will shut us down.
You know, our mate, I'm sorry, no, I won't, I won't speak. Counselor Delasola, you still have the floor, I'm sorry. You guys have the floor. Counselor Delasola, you all set?
You're set. No, I had one more other question I had, wanted to ask.
Well, no, I was going right up the line. If you want another question, you gotta wait.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
All right, Counselor McLaughlin.
I didn't ask a question yet.
Well, who, who has the floor?
That was my, my Counselor, Mangan had the floor. That was his question.
That was his question.
All right, so where are we? Counselor Delasola.
Okay.
That's what I said in the beginning, didn't I?
Uh, you can see in front of you, how you doing? Let you know, I'll repeat myself I did last time. I do the same thing you do for EverSource. I have the contractors, I got Feeny Brothers, I know Devro, very good company. But you can see in front of you, everybody has one, I made a couple of copies here. I'm gonna jump on the comment that you said about the street plates. If it's gonna snow, we take them off the street. Now, if you look at these pictures I have here, we got four inches of snow the other night. Uh, yeah, Olivera's Restaurant, I'll go with the first picture. You get National Grid backhoe that was there Friday, Saturday and Sunday, parked out in the street. Well, for three nights with the snow coming. Right behind Olivera's, the parking lot. That backhoe was there for three nights, knowing snow was coming. All right, I don't know, I've never, and I've worked for National Grid, I've been in the business thirty years. I've never seen National Grid leave their own backhoes on the streets overnight. Um, I have an issue with that, and I'm sure my colleagues will do the same. If you look at this second picture, the second picture is a picture of the backhoe also. You can see the trench that was never paved that leads into the parking lot of Olivera's, which, again, this is after the snow. Um, I won't take long on this, the third page. I'm hoping this isn't how you consider pulling the plates off. The plates were taken off, looks like to me the hole was backfilled, never paved. Uh, it's all mud, car's gonna go in there and sink. You get the hot top still around where the plates were, but the plates are gone. Uh, the next page, uh, next to Olivera's, you got the tying hole here. There's no hot top around the plate because the hot top is out on Broadway now from the plows. And Wednesday night, we're all at a fundraiser at Olivera's. And you could see that black vehicle there? There was about a five, five or six yards of sand sitting there Wednesday night, right in front of the entranceway of Olivera's on the side of the building. So my issue is, we're being told that if it's gonna snow, we're gonna backfill the hole. I know that whole procedure, but I don't see that happening here. After we had four inches of snow during the weekend.
Yeah.
And just to finish the little package, you got the last page. I know Devro doesn't do them on hot top. Riley Brothers does it for them, is that correct?
No, Devro.
They do it themselves. There's two barricades next to an entranceway of shooters, which it's actually a restaurant upstairs. These barricades are still there as we speak. They must have paved it and left the barricades in. Now, this little piece I have to blame on Devro, the last page? But everything else, I, I've gotta blame Devro in the city of Everett. I mean, knowing it's gonna snow, like, I'm in the same boat as you guys are, believe me, I, I do this every day. I get a call from the city, say, in Somerville and Cambridge, it's kinda snow Saturday. I want every hole backfilled, filled with sand, and pave it so it's safe for the weekend. This was never done. Uh, can you explain, I'll just, and I don't wanna take too much time, I got a lot of questions, it's kinda my line of work here, but can you explain anything on these pictures of what happened?
I really can't explain that. Usually, um, we are very good at removing the equipment and removing all debris that, you know, that we use for the day. We usually are very good at removing all that stuff when, when inclement weather is coming. So I don't particularly know what happened there. But I can, I can promise you that, I mean, from now on, I mean, uh, we will not let this happen. I can guarantee you that.
Well, Counselor, what were these pictures taken again that we're looking at?
I took these Sunday.
Okay, so, and, and...
Wednesday night, when I went to the fundraiser at Olivera's, that backhoe was there.
Okay, and the, um...
And I don't know when the plates was moved, I'm thinking, did you do that Saturday, pull the plates off so the, the plows wouldn't hit them on that side street? But they didn't even pave the hole. At least coal patch you could have, could have put near something. I mean, you're looking to come into the city during the winter, and we have four inches of snow, we already got these issues here. That, me personally, um, I know you're behind on cast iron, I know three inch cast iron, four inch gotta be replaced. But to have this start off already in the middle of December, I'm not too happy about having this come through the city and this is what we get when we're just starting out. I mean, if we had six, seven inches of snow, it would have been a mess. And I'm, I could blame Devro, but in the, at the end of the game, it's, I have to, the city, the city should be telling you, I, I want that backfilled. I don't know if you have an inspector that goes around from the city and watches you, but I just don't see this any good example, at least for me, that going into the winter, this is what we're gonna get. I've never seen National Grid leave a backhoe overnight at all.
Like I said, this is, this, this is probably one of, one of the rarity that happens. But usually in, in the wintertime, we usually take very good, uh, very great precautions because we know the plows, uh, we know there's a shortage of parking when, when it snows. Uh, we take that into consideration. So we do remove our equipment, we do remove, uh, backfilling holes in plates, uh, get, get rid of those things in order for the plow to, uh, to do their job. So, like I said, this...
Even the same area here, not to cut you off, but the same area, you got two sticks of four inch laying up against the church with two cones next to it.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a tripping hazard, and if someone hit the plates and the plates come off the hole, you know what's gonna happen. If that's only four inch cast iron in that hole, that car goes in there, you get more of a mess than what you have sitting here. I mean, we all know what could happen.
Well, this is, um, I mean, this is not Devro, this is National Grid, you know, because Devro...
Do the tines, correct?
Yeah, I mean, they work for us, so, um, and...
Whose plates are they?
Well, they're, they're, it's Devro's equipment, but ultimately, we're the owner, you know? We're the ones responsible here, there's no, you know, we should be, um, I mean, there's no doubt, I mean, there should have been better policing on this, there's no, by us. I was not aware of this.
That's just one area.
Yeah.
I know there's other sections in Everett that, there are plates.
I, I do know there's, there's email, you know, there's emails that go out to all of our contractors when snow comes, but we're not, I...
We don't...
I can't explain this, but we're guilty, I mean, there's just no other, you know, the stuff should have been removed.
Yes, we, we don't, like I said, we don't leave plates out there if we know that there's bad weather coming. This is just a miscommunication between the crew and National Grid, um, that happened here. But normally, on a regular day, this, this would not have happened.
Okay, Counselor President, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let other, my colleagues ask questions. I got about ten of them, I don't wanna, if they jump on a question I was gonna ask, then that's good. It'll cut me down, but I'm gonna...
I'll, I'll come back to you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Counselor President. Through you to maybe Julius or to Dan. Can you explain the process of how we even got to this point, right? There was a meeting at some point with the poppin' heads in National Grid, correct? To talk about work that needed to be done this winter. Can you just briefly touch on who was in that meeting? So just, just to kind of bring everybody up to date of how this even transpired, where, where are we at tonight?
Well, um, one of the things we try to do, Counselor, is, um, is plan the work so that if the city is going to be redoing streets, you know, in the coming year, uh, we wanna make sure that if we need to get our pipe out and, and new pipe in, we wanna get in ahead of that. So we're not digging up, you know, a street after you repave it or worse, if we're going in on a grade one leak. You know, grade one leak is something we have to address right away. So we have these meetings with all the communities to try to plan. And also, we have our own list of, you know, priority streets that we need to get done based on the leak, leak history. So we kinda share those lists and we move things around, you know? We move things around, we might move things into a, you know, a next, next fiscal calendar year based on your schedule. So we did have this meeting a couple of weeks ago, it's with the, your engineering, City of Everett Engineering Department, uh, the DPW, I was there, Andrew was there. And, um, I believe, I don't know if World Tech was there, but, you know, you guys have a, I know you'd have a pavement or a street consultant as well. Um, and I think CDM, Camp Drossler and McKee and Smith, I think they also have their own list of streets that they recommend to be done, uh, which they weren't at the meeting, but they did provide that list. And we also talked about streets that we'd like to keep, do, uh, which is, I think a list of five. Andrew has more details, but at least, list of streets that we'd like to address during the winter. So that's, basically, that's what, what happened at that meeting.
So is it fair to say that this list is a dream list, not an emergency list? There's no emergency on any of these five streets? There's no leaks that are gonna cause damage to anything, correct? They're just streets that you would like to get ahead of for, for the coming year? Is that fair to say?
Yes, at the, at the moment, yes, but, um, it, the potential of leaks are there.
Well, the potential every day for leaks. I drove down Everett Square yesterday and there was a leak in the corner of Norwood and, and Broadway. There was, you know, leaks could happen every single hour of the day.
But some, some, some are, you know, worse than others. That's how we, we classify them, the streets that we need to address. Some are, you know, we're probably good for five years or what have you, others we need to get to this year or this month or the, you know? So they're, depending on their history.
But none of the streets are, are emergency at this moment, they're all convenient streets to be done previous to the coming year of construction.
Yeah, they're part of the whole Capitol campaign, the campaign that I described earlier.
Does any other city allow you guys to do this type of work that's not considered emergency work during winter, during winter months?
Yes, yes.
It's a protocol to allow you to continue, there's not a cutoff date that you have to end? And if an emergency job comes up, that it has to be dealt with?
No, it's, it's, we have many communities that allow us to work, you know, during the winter. And, and the reason is they realize that there was a lot of older pipe in the, in, and it's, and to everyone's best interest that we, we try to get that pipe out of the ground. So by working year round, you know, we can get, get to that, uh, get to that pipe quicker. So we have a number of communities that allow us to work year round, yes.
Okay, so you guys have a meeting last Monday regarding these five streets. At Tuesday afternoon, a notice goes out to West Street and Wood Six that you're gonna stop work on Thursday. Do you really think that was suffice enough notice to a neighborhood that in less than forty-eight hours, you're gonna shut down a whole street and stop working and not allow cars to get in and out of their driveways and completely inconvenience the whole street? Because I, this is where it started from, to be very truthful. I had a resident call me up who was trying to get a delivery, and they were turned away twice during that day. They were told they couldn't get a delivery to their home of a piece of furniture. Um, and I knew nothing of this issue.
Yeah.
But they told me that on Wednesday morning, when they woke, when they came, woke up or came home, there was a notice from National Grid saying we're going to stop tomorrow morning.
I can, I can testify to that, that we do not, um, stop anybody from coming in and out of...
You may not have, but a police officer did. It was not, that's non-negotiable.
If, if, if we're working in a particular area and the policeman is further down the street, we don't really know what they're doing.
Okay.
So if they decide to take it upon themselves to stop somebody from coming in and without letting us know, then we really can't control that.
Okay, it's fair enough.
We tell the police officer, if there's a resident that needs to come in and out, they need to be able to have access to that street. If they live there, we can't stop them from going in and out of their house. Um, and if we are digging in front of their house, we would knock on the door and say, we will be digging in front of your house. Can, do you need to move your car out in case you need to go out? Because once we dig in front of your house, there's gonna be some time to, to have us supposed to put the pipe in, backfill, pave it, so you'll be able to get out. So normally, the, you know, if the customers are there, um, we let them know. And usually, they'll move their car out. And if they're not there, we, we can't stop, you know? So we have to work, and most of the time, they'll come afterwards. And they're like, okay, you know, how am I gonna get out of my house? Well, we knocked on the door and you weren't there, so we couldn't stop working, we have to keep working. So we're like, we'll put a plate on the hole, when you need to get out, put a plate, and, and you can come out.
So this process obviously didn't occur that day.
Yes.
What is protocol to give notice to a neighborhood? Less than forty-eight hours is protocol to you guys?
No, we, which...
To shut down a neighborhood is, is, in my opinion, not okay to give less than forty-eight hour notice that you're going to do?
We, we normally, we normally give more, um, more like a week's notice.
And maybe meet with the residents, let them know what's gonna happen in the neighborhood? I mean, is that reasonable? I'm just trying to figure it out.
Generally, um, we send out a letter, you know, like, this was probably an exception, but let me talk about what normally happens is, you know, we, we have a number of streets, let's say we wanna get done over the next year. Um, at some point, a week or two or more before the start, we'll send out a letter to each resident. All right, um, and then it'll be followed up by the contractor actually delivering letters, hand-delivering letters to the same group of people. Um, so that's, you know, it feels though, in most cases, that, that works pretty good, you know?
Yeah, and I agree with you, Dan, and that's reasonable. Two weeks out, you, you start notifying people that stuff's gonna happen on the street.
And then, we have to be careful, because sometimes it, it, things may change, and then we're not there for three more weeks, so we have to re-notify because people may have forgotten, so...
I'm gonna also yield the floor so some of my colleagues can ask questions, but I'm gonna go back to some of my points as well, like Counselor Delasola said. I have other questions on road plates that are in other neighborhoods in the city that are by National Grid that haven't, that weren't picked up before Saturday's snow. There's about four locations that I'll, I'll talk about afterwards, but...
Okay. Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to our invited guests. Um, Mr. Cameron, how are you?
Nice seeing you up there again.
Merry Christmas and all that good stuff. What, the, um, the percentage, you said there's percentages of streets being done in Malton and Medford and surrounding communities. What percentages are being done there compared to Everett?
I would say about the same. It's, it's certainly, it's not, um, near as much construction as we have during the rest of the year. So it's, it's, it's limited.
So fair to say it's, it's similar?
Yeah.
So if it's five streets here, it's five streets...
And it's a case-by-case basis, you know, yeah.
And then if an emergency does, you know, arise, then you go into that community and go in?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Let me see. Uh, Mr. Ofroni, is there any agreements between the city and National Grid? Any, any agreements that we know of, I mean?
No, don't wanna call up any agreement, uh...
Is there any, Mr. Cameron, is there any agreements between us and...
I mean, we're bound by state rules, you know, that, there's, there's, the DPU has laid out rules in terms of...
So state statutes?
Right.
Okay, so that's, that's the rule of the order?
Payment restoration and, and...
I was gonna say, because that, that would supersede anything that we have here as an agreement. If we do, in fact, which we don't now that we're understanding, okay. Thank you on that.
But we abide by the terms of any road opening permit, you know? That's pretty much standard for anyone opening up a road, yeah.
Okay, and then, let me see. So this works, we, we got this pretty much cleared up. It's not considered emergency work, it's just considered convenient work for the company to come in and do it?
To keep going, yes.
And how many streets between National Grid and the city are we planning on doing? Because we got two different notifications here, one's from the city that they're gonna be doing work as well. Uh, and then one was from you guys. Uh, it's with the carryover gas work, so these would be, just so everybody, my colleagues are clear on what's going on with the, uh, the streets. There would be Bucknum, Dartmouth, Russell Street, Willis Ave, West Street, Englewood Ave, and Taylor Street, the National Grid. and Taylor Street, the National Grid.
Yes.
And then for the city, it would be, and this, Mr. Ofrani, would this be just pavement or how would it?
Yeah, the list you have there is just pavement management. Those are the lists that the city planned to do.
So these would be part of the city plan to try to do?
Yeah, that's the, those are the streets that we shared with National Grid, you know.
Okay. So, I mean, I'll just name a few. I mean, how many do you plan on getting this, about twenty?
We actually don't have a count yet. Those are just a wish list.
This is a wish list to get done? Okay. And what would that involve? Would that involve the gas removal as well?
Right. The street we have here, it's just gonna be all full depth construction. Whereby we're gonna be doing the water, the sewer, the drain.
So it's water sewer?
It's a full, full construction.
So it'll be a full street, okay. So I'll just name a couple of the, Broadway to Russell, Glad Hill to Russell, Broadway to Robin, Shute to Broadway, Waters Ave to Appleton Street, Bravest Street to Highland Ave, Alfred to Dom Bizzaro, Bucknum to Hancock, Linden to Broadway, Robin Street to Bow Street, Reynolds Street to Glad Hill Ave, Hancock to Kinsman, Beecham to Botlett, Bucknum to Main Street, Chelsea Street to Second Street, Valley Street to Main Street, Reynolds Street to Broadway, Marlborough Street to Victoria Street, Bravest Street to the End, Chelsea Street to Marlborough Street, Victoria Street to Cabot Street, Cabot Street to the End, Chelsea Line to Route 16. So that would be the list for the City of Everett, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we have two lists. We have one from National Grid, one from the City of Everett. This is more of a wish list, but these need to be done by our grading system? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then this, these are ones, the wish list, basically, for you guys that you would anticipate wanting to do over winter, correct? So I just want to get back to notification of our citizens here. So if it's two weeks out, that's feasible, as we agree. But how are you notifying them? Again, is you just, is it a hand-delivery type?
Yes. We, before we start a job, we notify several to write a letter stating how long the job's gonna be and when we're gonna start and what we're doing. So everything is written on the letter and then the customer has my name and number.
So there's a contact info?
As a contact person, if they have any questions. Usually, I'll get a couple of calls here and there. You know, their main concern is usually how you guys are gonna get access into my house. And I usually tell them that, you know, we don't go into anybody's house unless we talk to them first and make an appointment.
Sure.
And you tell us, we're on your schedule at that particular time. We'll work with whatever date that's available for you and we'll do it then. We don't, we don't barge into anybody's house and say, "We gotta do your service now."
No. I would use a better than that. So, all right. So that's, that's pretty much out of the way. When were these streets, when are they gonna get started? Mr. Cameron, you know?
Andrew would have a better...
Okay.
Yeah, right now, we only have permits for West, Englewood, and Russell.
So, so West, and that's already scheduled to go?
Yes.
It's already started?
We already started, but we stopped it because of this meeting. So we stopped it.
So that was stopped?
Yes.
And then what other street?
Russell, which we haven't started yet, and Englewood, which we started and then we stopped because of emergency reasons.
Okay. So now, these people have already been notified on Russell and Englewood?
No, we haven't done, the customers in Englewood were notified when we started. And then because we had to pull the crew out because of emergencies, we're gonna re-notify them again when we're ready to get back. But we haven't done anything yet for Russell and Englewood yet.
And Russell's the entire Russell Street?
Yes.
The whole thing? Okay. So that's a big street. Englewood's a big street too, right?
Yeah, it's about, about a thousand feet.
Yeah. So that, that's pretty, two, two pretty good streets. So that would be happening, depending on what's going on tonight with us.
Yes.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna yield in hopes that, to, you know, my other colleagues, if they have any other questions. And I would like input at the end of it, just to make a recommendation at the end.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In regards to the work that you're doing, does anybody lose heat or electricity? None?
No.
Okay. Because I'm, you know, the first thing that comes to my mind is you're doing this in the winter and God forbid, anybody loses heat. We have a lot of seniors in the city and they may, you know, a lot of people may not have other places to go. If they lose heat, this is bad, you know what I'm saying, this time of year. I mean, on a good note is, if I was in the area, I would rather you do the work in the winter, because in the summer, I don't want, I wanna open my windows. I wanna enjoy the summer. We don't, you know, New England, we don't get much of a summer. But my only concern is making sure that people don't lose electricity and don't lose heat. Because no matter when you do the work, it's gonna be inconvenient. It doesn't matter if you do it in the summer, if you do it in the spring, if you do it in the winter, it has to be done. But to me, I would think that the people in the city would rather you do it in the winter so in the summer and the spring, they can open their windows. That's, you know, but I just wanna make sure that nobody's gonna lose power. That's my main concern.
The way we, the way we do the services for the customers is, once we notify them, they give us a date and we come that day. And we explain to them the process. Your service will be shut off for a few hours, because we have to dig the street, dig the sidewalk, and give you the new service. Once we give you the new service, everything is reconnected, all your appliances are relit. We make sure before we leave, you, your heat, your hot water, your stove, everything that is gas-related, all of that equipment is in good working order before we leave.
But you are shutting off the service for a couple hours?
Yes.
So that means for two hours, they're not gonna have any heat?
Yes.
Okay. So what happens if it's zero or bleed out?
Well, normally, that, the customer can say, "You know what? It's too cold that night. I don't want you to do it."
So they can cancel?
Yes.
Okay. So basically, if you were coming to my home and you were doing a service, I could say to you, "Well, you could come between ten and whatever," at ten o'clock, because everybody's gonna be out working.
Yes.
But you need someone to be home, is that correct?
Correct. If we, if, I could say that there's a lot of people that, that say, okay, "You only have access into the basement, so we'll go and, we'll go into the basement, we'll do what we need to do. But then, we can't turn anything on until you're there." So what we'll do is, we'll reconnect everything, but we'll leave it shut off. When you get home, you call National Grid, they'll send somebody out and they'll turn everything back on while you're there.
Right. But these people are still gonna be without heat. That's my point. My point is...
They'll be without heat for a short period of time.
Okay. Well, I'm, like I said, I'm really thinking about mostly the seniors and people that have young kids. They can't afford to be without heat this time of year for a couple hours.
We do, we do, once we go to a house and we, we notice the situation, we try to move everything as efficiently and fast as possible. Once again, we're depending on other entities to come in and do, and relight the pilots, relight the furnaces and everything like that. So there's, there's that delay. There is a delay.
Okay. So what happens in the case that I say, okay, you can come to my home? Does everybody have to agree on the street or you do individual?
Individuals.
Individual. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Capone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Many of my questions are already answered, asked and answered, so I think my colleagues have had. But through you two, our invited guests, I just want to make sure that I'm aware, maybe, Mr. Cameron, the, the streets that were the carryover work, is that the priority work that we're looking at for the, for the winter, weather permitting? Or were there...
Yes.
Okay. So just for the benefit of the folks at home, again, I'm just gonna reiterate them. Bucknum Street, Dartmouth, Russell, Willis, West, Englewood, and Taylor. Those are the ones that, weather permitting, you're gonna do that during the wintertime?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there other streets that you're looking to prioritize or those are the ones?
Those, for the winter, those are the ones, right.
And in terms of the notice, I know that you had mentioned that Englewood was already notified, but how long do you expect to be on each street? Do you know?
Normally, depending on the length of the job, I would say, let's say, for example, a thousand feet, would take about five weeks. That's including, including the services. And it also includes the customers. If they, it depends on how long they let us in. So the longer the customers don't give us access, the longer the job. So we try to tell them, you know, we try to get out of the street as soon as possible. So the earlier you give us an appointment, the earlier we're out of your way. So normally, they, they work with us.
Okay. So they give you plenty of time to notify the other streets?
Yes.
That work is coming and go from there. And then one other question I have is, what type of identification ID badge will you have as you're going door-to-door to make sure that, especially our seniors and younger folks that are more vulnerable, that you are a legitimate representative from the, from the company and that you're doing work? What do you provide as far as identification for that?
Each employee has the identif, an identification bag, badge from the company they're working for. So several would have their own badge, even though they're representing National Grid. Any National Grid employee would have their own badge.
Okay. Would, would several employees be approaching homeowners?
Yes.
Okay. So folks at home were watching, if it's a several ID badge or a National Grid badge? That's what they're looking for. And those would be the only, only folks that would be approaching the homeowner? Or the resident?
Yes.
Yes. And they would also have safety vest, hide hats, you know.
So they'd have the full gear and, but the ID badge is the crucial part for the safety of the residents. Thank you. The only other comment I have, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank the individuals for being here. I apologize in advance to them and to my colleagues. This being an unscheduled meeting during the holiday week, I do have a family commitment. So I hung around a little longer than I, than I should. I'm gonna get some heat when I go home. But I want to thank you for being here. I wish everyone happy holidays and I have to head up. But thank you for the opportunity.
Counselor DePaulatano.
Thank you. All right. Through the chair. Now, most of my questions have also been answered, but there's still some concerns in a few areas. Now, everything you've told us is going on the assumption that these residents are home or still living here. What about our snowbird residents? What about the residents that have already shut their property down for the winter and are down, down in Florida or have plans of being away? How do you address those situations? How do you connect the heat back up to those, to those houses so they don't have frozen pipes, they don't have other issues relative to having no utility service?
Well, normally, we have phone numbers in our system that the customers will provide us. Sometimes they'll provide us with only their home number and some customers will provide us with every single number to get in touch with them. So if, if we don't have another number, then we have to do the service up to a point and we have to stop it there. We can't really go any further.
So are they, are they still have utilities at that point?
Yeah. We would never shut off anyone's gas without speaking with someone or making an appointment, like Andrew said. We, you know, we, so if it was a situation like that, we would go to a certain point and leave it, you know. We would never do that.
All right. Now, I just wanted to be sure, because, you know, I, you know, through the beauty of technology today, I mean, I've been asked that question by a few of our residents who are gonna be affected by this, who either are already away or will be away. And their concerns are, are they gonna have problems while they're away with, with their services? I mean, this is the problem with doing work this time of year. Again, I understand the necessity, but the problem is that not everybody is accessible. Even when we discussed our snow removal program, there was great length of conversation about, about residents who are not going to physically be here and how do we hold them accountable? So that's, that's a concern I have, is as long as these people, as long as their properties are gonna be secure, and I'm just concerned how you, how you identify that, if at all, if you're able to.
Yeah, we do identify that. We, once we do encounter something like that, we try everything possible to find out who to contact. If there's a backup number, another name on the account, we explore all of that before we do anything. And sometimes we'll, we'll wait a few days and keep going to that house and make sure that somebody's there. But we don't shut anybody off in the, in the middle of winter.
And what's your plan to, to catch up with these customers in April or May when they come back? Because in some cases, that's how long people go down to Florida for during the winter months.
Yeah, I can, I can testify. I've never encountered anything like that where the customer is out for that long.
And I, and I can understand that, but I'm, I also work for a company that offers a seasonal program and I do know for a fact that a considerable number of people do go away in the wintertime until April and May is when they're usually coming back.
I have never encountered this.
Yeah.
I'm in telecommunications, but that's, and our customers do suspend their services during the winter months. But that's, that's, that's how I'm able to gauge that, that information. Been doing it for five years and, you know, probably work with at least forty to fifty customers a week. And I'm only one out of a hundred and sixty. So there is a significant timeframe that people do go away this time of year. I just want to make sure that there's, there's some thought given to how we're gonna catch up with these people so this way here, a street is completely done, not partially done, with some people still using the old, you know...
I think overall, if I could just comment, I think overall, we do have pretty good success of getting in. I mean, we just had the situation where we were here. It was more of an emergency, but same situation as you described. You know, we speak to the neighbors, 'cause when, when Andrew's crews move in, you know, they're there like, could be four to five weeks and some of the people actually get to know the crew, you know. And they kind of gauge where they're gonna be. They're starting at that end. Well, maybe they're getting a hundred feet a day, so it's so many days out, they're gonna be in front of my house. We've had, you know, neighborhood, neighbor collaboration as to, you know, how to get in touch with people. So I think we, a success rate of getting ahold of everyone during the winter to make these conversions, I think is pretty high. But, you know, we would never leave anyone, you know, we would never turn anyone off unless we had full access to convert them over to the new, to the new service.
I understand. I believe my question was those, what is your plan? And that, I haven't really, I've heard, all I've heard is reassurances, and that's fine. But I still don't understand and need to be reviewing public, understand how that, what that process is.
I mean, if we, if you completed a street and had one or two left over, we would just keep, believe me, we would keep trying to get in contact with them. And if it took until April, you know, we would go back out and finish it then. But I think overall, we do a lot of work year-round and I, I think we have a pretty good success rate. But we certainly would never leave anyone without any heat, without having, or enter their house to shut things off without having first made an appointment. Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Counselor Delisola?
Gentlemen, I was gonna continue. Counselor DePaulatano's question was, the neighbors could, they could always talk to the neighbors and see, you know, "Peter's going to Florida for three months" or something like that. And I know this situation. It works. But I want the residents to know, if they're doing, they're doing your street, don't be afraid to walk out and talk to the several crew, let's say, doing the work and say, hey, you know, "Do I have to get out, I have to get out in the morning at seven o'clock? Will I be able to get out?" And don't be afraid to talk to the workers out there. I mean, they all have IDs, the vests and helmets. I just want to throw that out there. On Russell Street, up near the high school, is that gonna be a late start?
Yes. I've actually spoken with the school, 'cause we sent out the information out saying that we're gonna be working there. But I got, I got the information from the school. They called and I explained to them that we will not interfere with the buses at all. What we do is, if we know the school's gonna start at eight o'clock, we, we don't start until after eight, until the buses are in, drop off the kids, and leave. And once they leave, then we, we start working. And then by two o'clock, we pretty much stop working, 'cause we know the buses are coming back. So that's what I told the school when I spoke with them.
Okay. I have a little list here, so don't mind me. Ferry Street, I can say is kind of related. Several, I'm hoping, several has the equipment out there. One day they're working on Ferry Street, next day they're not. It's confusing to the residents. They get on Ferry Street Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. "Oh, look, they must be all done." You come around the corner on a Friday, they bang, they are, they are working. And I understand you're, you're doing the side street tie-ins and stuff, but they have equipment sitting out there. They have an excavator. If they're not gonna use that, can we get those off the street this time of year? I know with the frost coming, they may be using it on the other job, but if we can find a, call it a command post, somewhere they could park the equipment in a parking lot, if there's a storm coming, to get it off the street. I know they can't drive the excavator down to the yard down there, Sacramento Park, but something like that. Just get the stuff off the street.
Okay.
If the city could supply you with somewhere to pocket, that's fine with me. The biggest issue I think a lot of people have is the, and I won't dwell on this too long, is a traffic plan. You guys have a traffic plan? I left one. Everybody has one here. There's the one that I use myself. I didn't see, and I'm just looking ahead on the winter stuff. On the job in Ferry Street, you guys had like Glendale Square blocked off and there was no, no route. was no, no route how to get around the area. I know, 'cause I live around there, but other than that, someone out of Malden, Rivera, and Melrose would be lost. Addicted.
Yeah.
Do you guys do a traffic plan down there that's submitted to the city, and you guys approve it?
Yeah, we, we approved it. I guess, when we had a discussion regarding Ferry Street, there was a traffic plan, because we did call the, the traffic division of the police, you know, and honestly, no matter how much design is put in.
It's a tight street, I understand that.
It's, it's a tight street, and as a matter of fact, what you're gonna do, you're gonna divide those cars to residential neighborhood, you know? So, we've left it to the detail office, you know, to make the call.
Make the call.
And also, we have signboards that would, you know, direct residents, you know? And it's been a little bit confusing regarding where these cars are going on Ferry Street, you know?
Um, we can go on. I, I just, like I said, it's, if we could not have happened what we had, the pictures that I had made up.
Okay.
And I, I don't know, it's tough, I understand, everything goes on, but as long as the paving's done right, with the cold weather, I know it could break and crack up, the, the soil you put back, it can be muddy, I understand all that, but as long as the residents get a good notice, and if we could put, even on the Everchene, all the streets that are gonna be done, I know we announced it here, for the five or six streets, if we could put on the ECTV, if that's possible?
I don't know.
In case someone didn't see the, uh...
Gotta, gotta make motions for whatever they want.
Yeah.
But remember, no, no motions at this meeting, though.
Okay, all right, next meeting, okay. All right, gentlemen, I mean, I think we covered everything. I know we have so much cast on every place, I'm in the same boat. So, I hope we all work together here and get this done in the winter, just... On the letter, do you put down that, if it does snow, you're not gonna be there, the residents know?
Well, the, the letters we're sending out now are saying that.
You do?
But the, the spring and, and summer letters.
Right, oh, I understand, I know, yeah.
But, yeah, but then now, we're sending letters saying that we will not leave holes open prior to a storm, or anything like that. So, we'll, we'll pull the plates and backfill.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I think, um...
Okay, Joyce.
No, I think it's, what's going on, it's very unusual, you know, because when we, when we, we held this meeting with a National Grid, you know, our discussion was to basically notify the council in terms of this work we're doing, you know? It's not just like, not letting you guys know that some of the streets are gonna come up, you know? Like, the major streets, we felt we should bring it up to you guys, but like the side streets, we just felt that if, if they have grid two leaks, 'cause usually, they've been coming to the city for repairs, you know, so we felt that they can start, that's how they started West Street, you know?
Well, if they're doing leaks, I mean, we don't expect a call.
Leaks, yeah, you know.
But you're talking five streets here right now.
Right.
That's, that's more than, you know, I dig, I'm just finding this out now, though, you're doing these streets, I mean, we know now.
Yeah.
But we got called by residents saying, we're on West Street, and I'm like, wait a minute, I didn't think you were gonna, I thought you were just gonna stay straight ahead on Ferry Street, concentrating on that job.
Right.
But now, we're expanding through the winter, and, you know, I know other cities don't let us work in the winter. If you have an agreement with them, I mean, I don't know if we can stop that, but just we can't have, you know yourself, this is something, you say out of the ordinary, and we're just keeping an eye on everything. The incidents and the pictures.
How can we, you know, maybe, that's a good point you're raising, how can we better communicate with you guys? Because, you know, our, our databases are focused on the customers, 'cause that's what we have.
Correct.
And we also send notice to the, to the city staff, but...
If the city gets it...
We're glad to improve that as well.
If we got it in our mailbox.
Yeah.
Whatever the city gets, we should be notified, at least. So, a resident calls me and says, I'm starting on my street tomorrow, and I'm like, you know, I don't, I don't, I didn't get nothing.
Yeah.
And, you know, doesn't make us look good either.
Rather than...
We don't know what's going on in the city.
Rather than the entire account, maybe we could include the clerk? You know, I, you know, we can, we can include anybody on, on the notice.
Yeah, we, we can work on that. If you notify the city, we'll, we'll have them notify us.
Okay, yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Cameron, or Mr. Joseph, why would you guys pull off of Englewood versus, for what emergency would deem necessary to pull off of a job that you already started to, to go do something else?
For example, we could have a street that is gonna be paved in, in the spring, so we try to get rid of those streets first. Or, if there's a street where there's multiple grade ones leak on that street, and the leak side of the company says that, okay, this street will be a problem the whole winter, we're, we're gonna have broken mains every, every so often on that street, can you replace that main? Then we would pull a crew off of a job that's not an emergency, and put the crew on that. So, normally, that's how we do so. Any paving job, or any emergency leak jobs, will move the crew.
Okay. I, I just wish there was more coordination, right, so that we don't start a street, pull off for two weeks, go back to a street, if there's more coordination on the overall. Because I'll be honest, five years ago, maybe, it happened on Baldwin, I have the street I live on, Deveraux did my street over in the middle of the winter, and it really turned into being a disaster. They left equipment all over the street during snowstorms, there was road plates on the street during snowstorms, and this was about five years ago, but it was in my face every day. They left their backhoe on the street for maybe two weeks, it got snowed in, it was buried in snow, and they didn't move it, and they stopped working. Like you're saying, they pulled out for two weeks, because there was other jobs that needed to be done. In the meantime, they left their equipment and, you know, generators and so forth on, on the street. So, taking a pocket, you can imagine it's tough at any time of the year, never mind in a snowstorm. So, I, I have some real concerns about doing work that's not considered an emergency during winter, because of kind of history repeats itself, because of what we've seen in the past. On Ferry Street Saturday, there was also road plates left on Ferry Street before the snowstorm. They were there during snow, and, and that's not okay. We can't keep road plates on the road. As somebody that plows snow, I know that if you hit a road plate, you're gonna go through a windshield or a truck, because it stops you dead in your tracks. So, to leave road plates, and you can't see them after an inch of snow, it's detrimental to operate of a, of a snowplow. And I'm sure you both can agree to that, that it's not, it's not okay, to be truthful.
It's not, and like I said, we'll, from, from this point on, I'll make sure that every hole that we have, we will backfill and remove the plate, if we know that snow's coming. So, that, that, I can tell you that we're gonna move forward with that.
And what is the availability of police details at this point in the city? Because I know yesterday alone, the detail office was looking for four details that weren't filled, National Grid being one of them, which was in a main intersection, which was Broadway and Norwood Street. They shut down Norwood Street to one lane of traffic in the middle of the day. You can imagine the safety of having your guys out there working with no detail on a side street, never mind a main intersection like Broadway and Norwood Street, right? The neighborhood was a disaster yesterday afternoon. Everybody was all, all mixed up. So, you can't fill the details we have now in order for an emergency. What is, what is your, what are you seeing in Everett with details? You guys, you guys are obviously having a problem, right, filling details on a regular basis?
No, not that.
Yeah, but I've actually, I've spoken to Chief Massey, he's been very good, you know, he realizes, he just asks us for more notice, you know? We, you know, I mean, we've had, we've enjoyed many years where he could call up that morning.
Right.
You know, but now, you know, for a night job, he wants to know, it was twenty-four, you know, the day, not the day of, the day before. So, so for instance, if we wanna work tomorrow night, we need to call for details today during the day. If we wanna work tomorrow morning, he wants a call twenty-four hours in advance.
Twenty-four hours in advance.
Yeah, and, and that's, and that's fair game, because it's very busy right now. As you know, we have a...
The city of Everett is extremely busy.
Yeah, we, we have a lot, both on the electric and the gas side, there was a lot of work going on.
And you guys are doing a tremendous amount of work.
Yeah.
A lot of work on Wood Six, a lot of work throughout the city of Everett as a whole. So, there is, there's only so much resource we have in our police department, and it's gonna dry up quickly. So, I'm concerned about, you know, these projects are lengthy projects, right? The Russell Street project's an eight-week project, West Street, six weeks. That's gonna tie, tie up a lot of manpower for these projects. Is there a better time to do this, when it's less, less invasive in the city, is there, than when it's a little bit slower of time? Because right now, with the boom happening, with wind really picking up in the next couple of weeks, there's so much else happening in our city. Have you thought about that, Mr. Cameron, or Mr. Joseph?
I mean, I, I think right now, it is the best time to do it, because wind is actually not interfering with us as, as of right now. I think the, the further along wind is, 'cause I'm actually, I actually did the gas service for wind. We just finished it, and they're still under construction, where they, they don't really interfere with us with what they're doing now. I think the further along they get, the worse the traffic's gonna get, because they're gonna, now they're gonna bring beams and everything in there, so the tra- so we're trying to get these jobs done, so when that happens, we, we don't interfere with them, and they don't interfere with us. So, the later, the later we wait in the spring, that's when they start bringing beams, they start bringing concrete, and all of that.
No, that's when it starts, it's December twenty-seventh. Steel is going up as of December twenty-seventh on the wind site. So, that's, that's happening next week, you know? So, that's exactly my concern, is all that is going to start happening, and starting right after the holidays, and now we're gonna include these streets. We just don't know where we kind of meet in the middle here to, to, to kind of relieve some of the stress.
Are, are you referring to the, the police detail?
Exactly, yeah.
Or more the, yeah, I mean, we would never, you know, work on a job, or hope that create an unsafe situation, but...
If, if we're in a major intersection, and we have no details, we will not go in that intersection.
Okay.
My, my crew already knows that, they would call me and say, hey, Andrew, I have no details, and, and I, and I usually tell them, you know, don't go in there until you have a detail. So, that's, that's usually the way we go.
I'll yield the floor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring something up next Monday, but I'll yield the floor at this point. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming tonight as well.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor McLaughlin.
Through you, Mr. President. I actually asked some questions of the, the neighbors on the streets, and basically, their, their concerns are with, to the general, traffic, traffic configuration, that, like, say, on, which one was it? Russell? Russell, that's the back of the high school. So, that street right there is gonna be, it's gonna be a nightmare for these people that live off those adjacent streets, which they all go one way down, from what I'm believing. So, that's, that's their concern with, with traffic configuration, and how that would be alleviated, how they would actually go about alleviating that to, for them, because they're gonna be mostly impacted by that. And that seems like it's gonna be, how long would that project on Russell Street be? It's a bigger street than West, so...
Yes. I, I projected eight weeks with two crews. So, we'll have one crew on one end, and another crew on the other end, and then they're working, they're, they're gonna meet in the middle. So, we...
So, that street will be blocked, right? Correct?
No, there, we, we don't, we don't block any streets, we rely on the detail.
Okay.
To let us know what's...
How many offices will be on the detail for that?
Normally, we get, for each crew, we get two details off, detail officers, so...
Two offices?
Yeah, so it depends on the scope of the job, and, and what is needed.
So, that's per crew? Two offices per crew?
Per crew.
Okay, so there'll be four?
Total four.
All right, and then they would have to reconfigure the traffic flow out of that area?
Yes, so whatever they require from us, detour signs, do not enter signs, or what, whatever configurations that the detail officer tells us to do, that's what we do.
Okay. So, that, that's the answer. It would be up to the, the police officers that are involved at that time, and they would configure traffic away from that congested area anyway, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And, thank you.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cameron, you know I had spoken to you before in regards to keeping us up to date on things, and I'm gonna recommend, we all have emails, by the way, so what would you, what would be reasonable? That you tell us every thirty days, every sixty days? What do you feel is reasonable for you to update us on all this work being done?
As far as, you know, where we're at, where we're working?
Where we're at, what you've completed, where you're going next, and how long is the plan on being there? Because you might give the, our people notices to weeks, they may not be home, they may not understand us, now, they might call us and say, you know, we don't know when they're coming on our street, or... And, and I understand a plan, a plan can always change.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I understand that. You might tell people they're gonna be on the street a certain time, and then it snows out, you've got two feet of snow, you're not going anywhere. So, people will, you know, would have to understand that. But just to say, okay, Russell Street, you said it was gonna take approximately, what, five weeks?
Eight.
Russell, about eight weeks.
Eight weeks. Okay. So, when you, when you start Russell Street, can you give us an update, saying we're starting Russell Street on blah, blah, time?
Sure.
It's gonna take approximately eight weeks. Nothing big, I'm, I'm not looking for anything that you have to write a book, just something that we know when you're starting, that way if people call us, we know what's going on, and more or less, we say eight weeks by the...
I, I usually send an email, the letter that we give to the customers, that we drop door-to-door to the customers, and I send that email to the city. So, I can include you guys in that email with that letter that I sent out.
Okay.
Which details everything that we're gonna do, the timeframe, the length of the job, and what we're basically gonna be doing on that street, which is replacing the gas main and services to the customers.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you for coming. And, and any more questions? Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make a motion.
Excuse customary, thanks.